A few more about the highway master plan that we're preparing right now. If I can get my slider to work. A few safety housekeeping items, we're a small group, I think we all know the drill. Let's keep our masks on, oh and I should stand in front of this. Maintain our social distance, emergency exits are right behind. Restrooms are in the hallway to the left. And please do silence your phones. And just as a reminder, we're here to talk about the highway improvement projects. And so we want to keep that purpose in mind in our discussion. And make sure that we recognize that we each have a diversity of perspectives. We're all trying to come up with solutions that best serve the community. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Henry to, actually, I'm here to say a few words and maybe get us started. Do you want, it's all yours. Yes. Yeah, and if you want to stand up here, then it'll be recorded.
Good afternoon to all of you, thank you Todd from the GHD Community Board. Thank you, Henry, thank you. Lauren, Stacy, Atholik, or Stacy, oh, welcome home.
Thank you.
Welcome home, and to all of you who are here, Ardis, Darren, Ardi, Abby, Ardi, Dwayne. And all of you, thank you for participating and coming to listen to this important hearing. It's about federal highway here at the island of Rhoda, and also, oh, Mary Stacy and.
Rosanna.
Stacy and Rosanna. Thank you for joining us in this public hearing. I know you are all over the way to California.
And Arizona, yes.
Arizona, yes, so thank you very much. So, important stage, thank you guys for coming to the meeting behind your families. You know, coming to the island of Rhoda to help the people of Rhoda and the island of Rhoda, of the islands. That's important thing I said as well. So, thank you very much, and well, let's get to it.
Okay, thank you.
Take care.
Hey, winners, good evening to everybody, everyone. My name is Henry Otis, Senior Highway Editor. In the Department of Public Works. Thank you for your attendance and interest in this public work. DPDW and PHD are here to listen to your questions and comments. Comment and participation is very important because it will help provide a successful update for CNMI's 20-year highway master plan. A comprehensive highway master plan will be guide for the future of infrastructure and transportation on all three major islands of Saipan, Tinian, and of course, here in Rhoda. With that said, I would like to introduce our panel, taking notes and input from the public, from the public. From team DPDW, we have Isagani Salazar, Lauren Sanchez, Kenneth Darn, and Stacy Atholik. And from the PHD team, I would like to pass this on to Todd, introduce his team. And continue with the explanation of this highway master plan program. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Can everyone here be okay without the microphone?
Sure.
Okay. I tend to be awkward with microphones, so if everyone can hear me, I'll just project. Thank you, Henry, thank you Mayor for the introductions. My name is Todd Tregenza, I'm the project manager for GHD for this project. And we're very grateful and fortunate to have been selected for this planning effort. I know our office and CNMI has done a lot of important work here. But I think that this is the first time we've done a planning study that I know of, at least for transportation. So, we're very excited and fortunate to be doing this. With me, I have Tom, we also have Stacy on the line and Rosanna fielding any questions from the public from online. So, I wanted to briefly touch on what this update is. This is a 20-year highway master plan. Last one was completed in 2009. I think it started in about 2006 was the first scoping meeting. So, they take a little bit of time to put together. Part of that is because we want to meet with all the communities and make sure we understand your priorities. Before that, it was prepared in the 90s, so I think it's every 10 years or so this plan gets updated. So, we've lost a couple of years, there've been some challenges, certainly here in CNMI and globally. So, here we are in 2021 updating the plan. The prior plan is this document, it's 300 pages, it's a long book. And I've read it several times, including on my flight over here from California, I read it again. And it's an important document because it really is the guide for infrastructure development for transportation on the three islands. And so, it's really critical that we understand what the community's priorities are. Because that's where we want to use the federal money that is received to build the critical transportation improvements. And I'll show it later in the presentation, it's a short presentation, I promise. I'll show, you know, some of the projects that have been completed, just to demonstrate that this plan won't just be completed and sit on the shelf. It is utilized and it is important. It's also important that it sets a cost estimate, so we know how much these things roughly will cost and how much to seek funding for. Some of the big steps here are getting the data collection. And part of that is the traffic data, going out there and counting cars. There've been some issues with that because of the visitor shift that's down, I'll go through that in a little bit more detail. The other half of that data is the public data, so it's the input from the communities. We have some workshops, we have one here today, obviously, in Rhoda, next week in Tinian, and the week following in Saipan. So, the goal here really is to establish a transportation vision, understand the priorities. And that's going to be driven by not only the data that we collected, the data that's been collected on the islands already, the crash data, but also your public input. And then, from there, we'll develop a list of projects that we propose. The financial analysis is also an important element. That looks at all the different funding programs that have been available in the past and what we might expect to be received in the future moving forward over the next 10, 20 years. We will evaluate the improvements not only based on public feedback, but also we'll use a performance analysis that looks to maximize return on investment. So, where do the dollars go furthest? So, if we, what is the highest return on investment, what is the highest benefit cost, where do we get the most use from a facility per dollar spent? From there, we will have an implementation plan where we'll look at different programs that may be able to fund various projects. And that all gets collapsed into one big document like this one, the 2022 20-year highway master plan. We want to look at mobility, safety, and congestion, those are primary metrics. So, we want to make it easy for people to get around, we want to make it safe for people to get around. And we want to identify those spots where there have been congestion in the past, where we might expect congestion to return with commuting, but also in particular with visitor traffic returning. And I think I've already gone through all of this, but I'll put these up on the screen so you can see in a little bit more detail what we're going through. The data collection had some challenges, which I'll go into on the next slide. So, the 2009 plan was created during the early stages of the global recession. So, already there were some challenges with that. And so, that study itself, the one we're updating, had to look at prior data and make some assumptions about where traffic volumes could return once the economy improves. What we've seen here with the annual visitor shift is that the visitors did return after the recession and a steady increase with a peak in 2017. But then, in 2018, 2019, there was an initial decline, and then with 2020, I mean, it was devastating with COVID-19. So, what we've done in this plan is rather than assess current conditions based on the actual traffic that's on the ground, we also want to forecast what conditions could be like if visitor ship were normal. And so, we looked at the prior year's data when there was visitor ship on the island. And we used that to create a scenario, a baseline scenario of 2021 with visitor ship. So, we can look at both, we can look at what the existing needs are today, and we can look at what they are, what they would be today with visitor ship back introduced to the island. Then we can also 20 years down the line where traffic levels could be. And traffic volumes went down across the board, no surprise, right? With the visitor ship down, the traffic volumes are much lower than they were in 2008, 2009. In fact, they were lower in some cases than they were in the 90s as well. This is our study area for Rhoda, and it's the highways, the federal highways. And so, while we're taking input and we're looking at connectivity needs and people's concerns on all the roadways of Rhoda, the priority is really the highway now. And so, those are the numbered routes, all the 10, Route 10, 101, 100, they're the major roads here that are noted on this map. I spent the most of the day today driving on them. Here are some of the volumes that we collected and adjusted for visitor ship. And they look very similar to the 2008 estimates. So, once we adjust back in for normal visitor ship conditions, things look pretty similar. There hasn't been a lot of other background growth. So, the conditions remain relatively similar to how they were before. And thus, I anticipate that a lot of the improvement needs will remain relatively similar. It'll be maintenance, you know, rehabilitation, fixing what we've got, and then looking at where we need new connections. And so, that's what Henry and his team and us looked at today, driving around where some of those new connections could be, where they make sense. And those are consistent again with the 2008 plan, so there's going to be a lot of carryover. One of the biggest changes between that old plan and the new plan may be the community's priorities. And so, that's where we really want to make a good effort of understanding what the people that live here and work here, what their most important needs are from the transportation system. Because the traffic data has not changed that much. So, we want to make sure we do account for changes in public opinion. The level of service is a measure we use to essentially measure congestion capacity. And as you would probably suspect, most of the roadways are doing well, they're level of service A, or actually, this is from 2008. They were level of service A all over the place, and then some pockets of level of service B. And today, we're looking at level of service A and B again, it's now categorized as C or better. But essentially, what we're saying is the same as 2008, is that there's enough roadway capacity on those two-lane highways for the amount of traffic that's out there today. So, we did launch a website, and I'm going to demonstrate how to use that website in a few minutes. And this is something new, so this was not done in the prior plan. In fact, the tool may not have even been available. But it's been fantastic, because while we do love coming to the communities and having these workshops, having a website where people can access it at any point of time, whenever it's convenient for them, wherever they may be, has provided a lot of input opportunity. So, as of a few days ago, January 18th, we've already received 127 comments from the public on the three islands. Some of the concerns that we've noted were safety concerns, where people think that the street and roadways need some design improvements to make them safer. We also reported a lot of bicycle and walking concerns, where people would like more opportunities to walk and bike, lighting. And then, there've been some other ideas and suggestions. And I think one thing I noted is, a lot of people are wanting to make sure that we take care of those improvements that we know will be needed when visitor ship returns, because they were needed before, so not to forget about those just because. And so, we'll be evaluating whether some of those alternate connections that were proposed in 2008 remain appropriate. Here's a highlight of some of the projects that have been completed from the old plan. There was a site distance issue, a wall essentially that was making it difficult to see around a corner at Route 110. That is complete. There is a village-wide drainage study completed, and we'll be looking at that to see if any of those improvements need to be brought into this plan. Route 101 had been upgraded, there's still some length that's unpaid, but a large section was paved, so we'll look to continue that in this plan as well. Anyway, several are on here, the duty area upgrade, there's contract is currently underway. So, that should be getting started at some point, and the Route 10 hazard elimination is also ongoing. Oh, and connectivity to the Bird Sanctuary Park. So, I might pause here and bring up the social pinpoint site, just so everyone gets a chance. This is what it looks like, and I'm going to navigate to the project website and show you all how to get there. And then, I'd like to just open it up for conversation, comments, questions, and see if we can discuss some of your priorities here tonight. So, here's the project website. And if you haven't been here before, just a quick orientation. We do have a section where we talk about the upcoming events, including the one we're at right now. Some information about the project, what we're doing, why we are doing it, a video introducing the project. And we talked about some of the changes in traffic volumes and visitor shift. And then, if you scroll to the bottom, you can click on this button right here, Interactive Project Map. Navigate to map. Hopefully, my internet connection remains strong. I probably should have had this loaded beforehand, okay, here we go. Some instructions here over how to use the map, but I'll show you real quickly. And then, on the left, you'll notice there's a button for each island. So, I'm going to go ahead and click right to Rhoda, and it'll zoom in. And then, commenting is pretty straightforward. Basically, if you have a safety concern, or a walking or a bicycling concern, you can zoom in to the area and then drag one of these pens and drop it right on the map and into your comment. When my connection catches up. There we go. So, hopefully, that's helpful. Has anybody had a chance to look at the website so far? In the room? You have, okay. Did you find it intuitive, easy to use? Okay, great. Let me just see, I think that's the end of my formal presentation. So, I'd love to just open it up and see if there are any questions, any comments? From the public?
Well, I thought I met with the community board this morning.
Okay.
And I had a fair amount of concern on, and, you know, Donnie and Ben Meyer, the director of DPDW, were there. And hopefully, there was, hopefully, there was some trust in the, number one is first, I asked about the status of the road. As you all know, it's been awarded, and I share this here in my conference, so, you know, and post. Obviously, it's taken so long. And the contractor, supposedly, is having trouble with putting in this, by the way, and stuff.
Sure.
And the other thing is that the route 100 project is really, I would say, a bandit project. Because all we're doing is patching up the holes.
Right.
We're not removing the entire asphalt and they are new. I think it's time that if you drive, well, you're driving, you're probably seeing this part.
Yes.
From airport to airport. So I'd like to let you go there. Secondly, the Route 100, Route 100, I would like to respart that along with paving the road to improve dark rail bridges and hope. The third one is to take a little bit off of the highway, make it higher than the highway. And I haven't left enough.
Yes.
So those, those are the three main concerns that I have. Along with some of the people who gave the permission for our roads. So I'm more focused on Henry and Danny and that consideration hopefully.
Great.
So I have a spot for him again, and I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you so much. Did everyone hear that, those comments? Okay, good, okay. Anybody want to take the highway ten? One sec, let's respond to this. Yeah.
All right, what do you mean? I would like to, you know, respond on the mayor's question regarding the route. But then wrote in. The current status of this project is, our regular is still working on the installation of the asphalt plant and it's about ninety-five percent so far. So hopefully we can, you know, see this, you know, equipment work by first week of next month. So they're gonna do some kind of test whether the asphalt plant is working properly or not. So the road project is kind of, you know, delayed because of this, you know, the pandemic, the manufacturing of the asphalt plant from China and also the communication between the technician and the drifter. Somehow the technician cannot come over here to the road because of the travel restrictions of Chinese, you know, from China. So hopefully we can see the project start by next month because some of the materials from Saipan in those are baseboards and, you know, the bastard for anti-skips is already arrived yesterday. So the equipment, the payers already here in Rota, and they have the contractor, they have the maintenance contractor. And they have also technician to operate the asphalt plant. These guys are, I used to work at DPW, so they're very well aware on how to operate this, you know, this asphalt plant.
Danny is, is it Chinese company that the road?
Uh, no, the Chinese is the manufacturer from China.
So why buy it?
Uh, because, you know, they, they bought the asphalt plant from China.
But my question is why? Shouldn't we consider buy American act?
Uh, no, the, the buy American act is only applicable to steel.
Steel?
Yeah, steel or a federal highways project. But for equipment, we can, you know, they, they are allowed to purchase from other companies, like, you know, asphalt.
So aside from both, anything issue or problem, I think one of the additional problem right now is we have to rely on a Chinese translator or whatever. I mean, it's just, I don't have the money. Go buy American act. It's them, I mean, depending on them as well, going to them.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the, the, the use?
Yeah, that's true.
So expect.
Yeah, we will consider that, you know, and for that, you know, next project, you know, considering that the restrictions from other companies. So it's, it's more easy and accessible to acquire from you. And then, you know, for the Route 100, everybody knows that, you know, we've already bought ends of the, of this road. And fortunately, the meat, part of the road is still unpaid because of the private owners' properties. And, and that's the biggest challenges that, you know, federal highways and department of public is facing because of this issue. It's been paid years, you know, on the road because I remember Mr. Martin Manolio, it was designed to work on this right of way issues. Unfortunately, he did not, you know, complete the, you know, the process. So we still have this issue. So hopefully, if we, you know, if the, the public communicate or coordinate with the, you know, with the government, I think I think can expedite the process of, you know, improving this road. And that's the only way because right now, the more we wait, the more problem we encounter because, you know, the family is the owner and then it goes to the, to their children, children, to their grandchildren, so, and so on. So, but like the mayor said, you know, about the grade aids, the tax cover. Tomorrow, we're gonna, we're gonna go out there again and we're gonna do some kind of measurement. Hopefully, we can do something for the safety, especially those farmers that are using the road. And we can see that's a very, very dangerous because about, it's a bit, it's a bit of Yeah, we will, you know, work on that, you know, most of that, that safety process.
I don't know that those cohorts were specifically called out in this one, so that's something that we'll definitely bring into the new plan. And the old plan did have paving of, I think, all the number of routes. So that, that was noted, but we can elevate that as a priority as we get rid of some of the things that were already completed off the list, those can elevate up in priorities. So, yeah. Thank you. Did you have a comment?
Yeah.
Or a question?
I had a question. Okay, but so I was actually wondering if you can give us a little insight with regards to the selection process of how these projects are selected? What, what body, which body actually does the selection? And like, is there somebody who can write a letter to, you know, to try to, try and get some of our priority projects worked on? Can you just give me like a kind of an estimate on the timeline when that can be completed?
Yeah, absolutely. So I don't know exactly how the selection was done in two thousand eight because I wasn't involved in that study. What we typically do and what I wrote in our scope and what we agreed to do is look at performance measures. So what benefit does the project give? And, you know, is it a safety benefit that we can quantify? Is it something that's going to reduce congestion? That may not be an appropriate metric maybe in Rota, right? Because you don't have a lot of congestion. But we'll look at safety as an important metric. And then we look at constructability issues, so implementation issues, whether it's very high cost, you know, cost affects prioritization as well, environmental impact, what potential environmental impact is there? Right of way is another big concern, especially, I don't know, when you guys get money from the federal highways, I'm not sure you can get right of way with that money. So that may introduce another step to the delivery of the project. And then another criteria that we can elevate in importance, and I think is new, it wasn't in this report, is public support and public input. So what is the community's priority on this project? So at this point, we're gathering information on what projects you want, so please use the website, the comment card, email me, email Henry, make sure those get to us. And then what we'd like to do is on the project website, we haven't discussed exactly whether there will be more workshops or not, but at least on the website, we would include an opportunity for the public to weigh in on priority. So there will be additional input on that. And I will say that if we get your input, it will be considered. And so that's kind of the, it's in the body that decides, it's really, it's us, it's our project team. So it's the GHD team talking to DPW about what the priorities are and then working with stakeholder groups like this to get your input and your feedback. In terms of what gets constructed first, I don't know. By then, I'm just a planner, I exit the plan and I leave it in DPW's hands. And I, I don't know exactly how that's selected, which projects get constructed first. Henry, I don't know if you have any input on that, how, how you determine which project gets built first from the list? Priorities and funding, I'm assuming.
Of course, health and community, that's what I'm talking about.
Environmental clearance, right of way, all those things that we try to identify early on so that we know what, what are the shovel ready projects, what can be delivered soon? And let's get some improvements going and then tackle some of the other issues, holding back the other ones later. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, the timeline, how long does that whole process usually take from the comment to completion, of the comments?
It, it really depends, so until construction?
Yeah, to construction.
It really depends. The prior study had identified short-term improvements, let me pull it up on the screen, that were, here they are. So these are the short-term improvements from the two thousand eight plan. Those were identified as a zero to four-year timeframe. The long-range improvements were five to 10 years. Now, those are aspirational targets, it's not always going to happen for a variety of reasons. But the completed projects that you see up top, you know, there's two from the short-term list and one's ongoing. And then there's a couple from the long-range list. So it, I would say that this is our best, our best guess as to what can be tackled feasibly early within the first five years. And then we try to stick to it. Any more questions, comments? Stacy, do we have anyone online?
Hi Todd, I'm on CNI one and I'll send it to DPW and GHD, so you're welcome to continue. We do have difficulty in just reworking services and hearing as the brick continues that we have second tier repeat or surprise their thought corresponding.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, well, I understand that there's infrastructure funding from Feds and there's a lot of it. And, but funding might be able to do our highways. And what I'm hearing from this meeting is that we are going to be updating that news as the plan for next twenty years. The funding, is the funding going to follow the old as the plan? Or you're working on something that you would recommend for the fund, where the funding is to be used?
Okay, yes, let me repeat the question for the online recording. The question was about funding, that there's funding incoming, infrastructure funding, and whether this current plan takes into account the funding that will be coming in and how it affects the allocation. So I would say absolutely, the financial analysis section of our report and the old report had a section like it, will go through that new infrastructure spending plan and see what we can expect to capture here for CNMI and then for Rota. And then the allocation of that would, I think, you know, there was priorities by island here. And I don't know exactly how the money's got distributed since two thousand eight, but this plan, we update the cost estimates, would I expect inform what, what we want to allocate to each island. So each island will have its priorities and then the funding will be distributed according to what, what can be built on the short-term ones.
The last thing we hear is delay. We want pretty much, as you can see, our roads are pretty much dilapidated and, you know, infrastructure really has an economic value. That's why, you know, we can't really move forward economically because of our infrastructure problems. And one of them, which is actually a danger, is hypersupply. And I hope that this will not delay the destruction of the process for where we can just do the funding right away. Because if there's funding, why not do it? And I feel that with additional layer of procedure that we need to go through, we're not delaying it pretty much, it takes a little, maybe very long.
Okay, so the, the comment was about, you know, noting the importance, the economic importance of the highway improvements and caution and concern that this plan's development may delay the construction of projects. My, my response to that is that this plan is still on the books. And as I mentioned earlier, a lot of those needs remain. And so the fact that we're updating this plan now should not delay any construction of projects that are already in the, in the plan. So the, the plan is not, it's not dead, right? It's still there on the books and until we adopt the new one, then it still remains. So those improvements remain and I believe DPW will consider, will continue to deliver projects on that list until this new one is, is completed.
Do you talk to me about the delivery of this and what that time?
Yes. We've actually, we've had some delays in this plan because of the data collection. It was a challenge because of the COVID conditions. And we, I need to revisit the schedule on, on when this delivery, our plan will be delivered. I believe, Henry, do you, do you remember exactly, was it the end of this year that we were hoping to complete this two thousand twenty-two plan? End of June, okay. So this summer, this plan should be completed. And then in, in the meantime, though, that, that old plan is still on the books.
I raise that concern because I think there's a time limitation for, for us to, I'm scared of the infrastructure money that's available for us. You know that, you know, the limit. I think, I don't want us to depend on money again like what we're doing in advance, you know? When we get the money, use it, you know, we need it.
Right.
That is just the process that's delayed. And then we pass the headline and we have to, there is, once we get used, so I, I hope we don't get to that experience again.
Sure, I can understand the frustration. Any other questions? Does everyone know how to get to the website? Do you have the, the website address?
Please provide any comments you know that you guys may have between now and this two weeks. February twenty-eighth is the closing of the comments. So if you guys have time or if you guys want to share with your family, friends, anything that they want to put in for their concerns, they can put it into the website and we're going to collect all of those comments and then integrate it into the report.
Yeah, this, I feel like traffic calling, you're monitoring the volume of traffic in certain areas. I wonder if, I'm careful that we have to look into the productive, solid and attractive high quality. And one of them is the, the high maintenance of not, you know, doing a good job like on highway and just fill it with coral and, you know, and press it down. First rain that comes washes it out, there was a lot of those here, animals and, you know, violence and the high wind is supposed, public process is doing its best, try to make their roads as well. And they're, they're not catching up with the, you know, with the extent of the problem. So that's the, taking into account the number of challenges, especially Route 100, we do a lot of tactics, public works, extend it in the next way, wash itself. So the sooner we do a good job, like put the highway there, asphalt, so that, you know, lessen the cost of maintenance and also, you mentioned about the safety, you know, there's a lot of barriers, you know, on that side of the road, a lot of play use areas, they have to pass, so you take those things into account. And it looks like you're in the high cost of maintaining roads like what we have now.
Absolutely, yeah. The challenge becomes if the maintenance isn't maintained, then you, eventually you have to rebuild the whole thing, so.
Question about funding. Does federal highway funding include acquisition of, of the concrete lanes?
I don't think so.
Unfortunately not. No, the federal highway, federal highway is not fun acquisition of right wing.
And I want to ask you, what are they doing in the United States? They are acquiring to build highway.
Right.
So what is the reason that that policy does not apply here?
So from my experience, when we receive grant funds from either federal highways or the California, I'm in California, the California DOT, we cannot use that money for right-of-way acquisition. It has to come from local money. So that may not always be the case, there may be exceptions to it, but generally that is a restriction on grant money. You have to have the right-of-way and you have to have the environmental clearance.
Maybe since they were for the CNMI government. I think that question should be posed the best because we don't have the necessary funds.
Right.
That's why all this holdup of the project, especially Route 100. I think the CNMI government holds private property owners a full meter. And they can't go forward without this project, without the appropriate funding. That's one issue that I want to bring, number one. Number two, we have contractors doing work, we lack labor. There's no workers here in Rota. So I'm asking again the CNMI government and the feds to waive this restriction of foreign workers coming here. We have to have a waiver so we can have additional workers from outside, bringing some Filipino workers and other workers. We, we cannot move forward, this number of projects. How many? Here in Rota, I, I saw a listing of about fifty projects.
Yeah.
So I just want to let you guys know, this is our concern, quick concern here in Rota.
I agree that it is in the two thousand and eight report and definitely the comments we can re-incorporate again for me to some emphasis on that.
Yeah, how we, how they're writing my recommendations.
And I think those, those comments, you know, add to the list when they come up with some sort of a priority, right? How they can go to the projects like Todd mentioned, that maybe there are some shovel ready projects that are less complicated, you know, maybe on Route 10 that you can do some work, but for Route 100, we do know that there are some issues, you know, the environmental issues, the land, like, there's some issues, something a little bit outside of our jurisdiction, but something that they can definitely write into the report and they can probably take into account and hopefully find some issues to that.
Yeah, there's, there's also some federal government entities that are interfering with one federal agency, for example, the highway. You want to build a dirty field road, here comes the fish and wildlife, telling you that we cannot bulldoze the area because there's a nest of birds. The people are more important than animals. So we have to go forward.
Yes, so we can look into the right-of-way question. I think, I do, I know it's a limitation of federal dollars, but we can have a conversation and include that in the report. And then any comments submitted to us will become part of the project report. I do encourage you to please let us know. The project website, just as a follow-up to that, is a very long address. So the shorter address is right here on these comment sheets, if you have this, I can hand a few out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want this?
Okay. So that's another way to give us your feedback.
And we don't have the money to acquire necessarily, uh, clearance for, for landowners to compensate. So.
So regardless whether you guys have a new plan, it will never happen in twenty years if we don't have the money. So that's why I really feel that the CNMI government should ask the feds. We don't have the money and so any federal designated highway should be, should come also with the funding necessary to acquire properties.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate you, yeah.
The website is still open and we're proud of you.
Appreciate you.